Ready, Jones? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 18th, 2018 meeting of the Town of Manchester Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the November 20th, 2018 minutes. Gentlemen, they were distributed to you earlier. However, you also have a written copy in front of you.
I've reviewed these and I recommend we approve them as written.
I'm sorry. You might make a motion that they are approved as written? Okay. Motion on the floor to the minutes be approved as written?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion is to approve the minutes as written? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you. Okay. Reports. Third item. Michelle, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I don't have a lot. Riley's Garden is still working for their approval just for preliminary. And of course Sheets is here this evening. Our number one north lickers is progressing. And I haven't heard anything negative, so I don't assume it's all going as planned there.
Okay.
That's all we have working on right now.
Thank you. Steve, anything from the town?
Good evening, commission members. Last Tuesday night, we had basically abbreviated meeting. We had a small retirement program for our departing director of public works, Donnie Noddle after 32 years. Friday's his last day. I'd like to introduce our new director of public works, Mr. Rodney Coontz. Rodney Coontz comes from us, to us, from Carroll County. He has 30 years of experience in public works and he's been with us the last several months, so it gave us time to mesh with Donnie and we wish Donnie the best of luck in his retirement. And we welcome Rodney on door staff.
Welcome, Rodney.
Very good. Welcome, Rodney. Okay. Still, anything from the council?
Just as briefly, we approved ordinance 235, which is adoption of the zoning map. And then we introduced ordinance 236, which is modifying the R40 for annexations after 10/118. So a public hearing will be held next month to approve that or to review that.
Great. Thank you, sir. How you doing, Bryce?
I'm doing good.
Good. What do you have for us from over in Westminster?
Two quick things. We had our regularly scheduled monthly planning commission meeting. And the planning commission certified the water and sewer triennial update. That is, so it's consistent with our master plan as well as the previously or recently approved 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. Next step is January 10th to brief the county commission and request a public hearing. And then, public hearing roughly be January 31st. And then by February 14th, we're still on track to have them just deliberate and hopefully adopt. And once they adopt, we'll send it off to MDE for their approval. And they have 90 days to do all their back and forth approvals. So hopefully by springtime, we'll have a fully approved new comprehensive or triennial update for the water and sewer master plan. And the bike pad master plan, chapter eight was introduced to the planning commission today. They're will probably into January meeting, review and discuss. And more than likely next month, they'll have chapter eight to bring to the planning commission here for y'all just to review if you have any comments and that kind of thing. And I do believe they will also look for a certification for the chapters that pertain to Manchester, make sure everything is good to go before we finalize that aspect. And that's it.
Very good. Any questions for Bryce? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the list is the agricultural use defined. Ms. Martin? You were here before us last month and we discussed this again.
Two months ago.
Two months ago. I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Is there anything else you'd like to add for this discussion?
I'll just state what I said the whole time is your agricultural use defines everything in a very broad tense.
She has to go to the light.
I'm sorry.
It's not recorded.
Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Again, I will just state that the definition is a very broad use and there is no stipulation made for what would be considered personal use.
Okay.
That is my contention, is that everything is considered to be agricultural as in a crop. I have a vegetable garden. They told me last week at the town council, "Well, it's not a crop." Well, I have four chickens. It's not a flock, but it's considered agricultural. So my point is, at what point does personal use get eliminated because everything is deemed as agricultural?
Okay.
Okay.
And so, and you're aware that in section 25125 specifically, really if I understand what you're saying correctly, it does list poultry in there as an agricultural use?
It also lists, is listed in your animal section as poultry. So again, you have, it's listed with the animals and it's listed with the agricultural. So you're, there's no allowance made for what is considered a personal use. Chapter 65, running at large, section 65-1, no person shall allow horse, mule, cow, calf, horned cattle, sheep, swine, poultry, cats, or other domestic, domestic animals or pets. My contention here is I do not understand why four chickens are deemed to be agricultural.
Okay.
They are my pets.
They are your pets?
They are my pets. They have a use. I have a dog in my house, so I don't have to have a security system. I have a cat in my house, so I don't have to have an exterminator. I have chickens in my yard to eat the fleas and the ticks, so I don't have to put harsh chemicals on my other two pets.
I would say to you that what you're quoting in chapter 65 is a general reference to the freedom that an animal is allowed to have. It doesn't talk at all about their use.
Exactly.
It just doesn't allow you to have an area in town, say for your cat or dog or what other miscellaneous animal you believe is a pet. You're not allowed to let it run at large.
That's why I have a fence for all of my pets.
But still, that doesn't absolve you of the fact that poultry is listed as a agricultural product?
It's also listed in the animal section.
Okay. Again, so if it's not listed in the animal section, you could argue that the poultry could run free and be accepted in the one rush hour we have chickens cross.
My contention was it was listed as an animal.
Yeah.
Not defined as personal or agricultural, just an animal. At some point, you all decide that a dog or a cat is an animal, but has no other definition. But poultry, for some reason, does. That's my problem.
Okay, so do your chickens lay eggs?
Yes.
What do you do with those eggs?
I eat them.
What do you eat from your cat?
I, I didn't say that every symbiotic relationship in my household had more than one benefit.
Well, I think you have to take that into consideration, especially when you're looking at the definition based on the code.
When I selected my animals, I selected enough that would fit within my yard, not being overburdened, not be diseased, be animals that I keep for a purpose. Some have more than one purpose.
Okay. But again, I go back and I'm trying to understand from my perspective, where we have farms in this area for years prior, that agriculture use, the farmer harvested something from that animal for the good of himself, herself, or the community. You are, as opposed to a pet that you are using as a, or keeping as a partner, something to keep you company, you are actually harvesting something and you have the potential, if you wish, to take those eggs and sell them to someone else, use them yourself. So you are gaining something from those. Therefore, it fits into the agricultural section.
Not necessarily, because they stated last week that crops would be something larger than a vegetable garden. So again, you're making an allowance for me having vegetables, fruit, shrubs, grass, trees on my lot because they're personal and not a crop. But there's no personal use for the poultry or any other types of animals. That's my contention. You're making a personal exception for my personal garden. That's not a problem because you stated it wasn't a crop. Four chickens is not a flock. It's personal use. In fact, an optimum.
So you're personally using the eggs?
And I'm personally using the chickens to keep the bugs out of my yard. Did you guys not know that, that that's what chickens do? They eat fleas, they eat ticks. I mean, there are symbiotic relationships that we don't understand anymore because we've gotten too far away from these things. But everything has a purpose.
But I don't eat chickens in my yard. I can live with the bugs.
That's fine. I would like to have chickens in my yard.
Okay. Well, they fit under the agricultural definition.
So you say.
No.
The definition clearly states the raising of farm products for use or sale. And you've stated that you're using them.
I don't consider them a farm product. There's the problem we have. I have a vegetable garden that I use for use.
Clear. It clearly states that.
My contention is it should say for use other than personal.
So you want us to change, you're positioning for us to change the definition within the code to fit your specific situation?
I think that there should be a portion somewhere that states the difference between what is deemed as agricultural and what is deemed as personal use. That is my contention.
So you're requesting the file of code change with the town?
I could do that. Right now, I'm looking at other options.
Is there, just for clarity, isn't there another ordinance that says no chickens in town?
No, the chickens, the only reason the chickens are in violation of the agricultural use.
Right.
Is if you cannot have the distance requirements met for their pen.
Yeah, see, I was, I was thinking that too, because if I'm not mistaken, it's 250 feet from each side. So I don't think you're, I don't think even the, even, even once we get through this issue, I still don't think the property can support it. I think, because I think the actual pen and the containment of the chickens has to be 250 feet from either side of the property. So you need at least 600 feet across the back there.
All right, but I don't have a problem with my neighbors. I check with all of my neighbors.
Yeah, I'm not worried about neighbors. I'm talking code, so.
But I think we did establish neighbors have complained.
No, neighbors have not complained.
To you.
There was one violation that I was originally told about, that they were running loose. Now, after that, there's been other things that were stated, but I think there's a bias against chickens. I think you all are under the.
Absolutely not. They're great to eat, especially on Saturday afternoon.
But I think that people think that they're diseased animals and they're just not. You're used to being, you're used to that myth because the way we raise our food. So yes, Caitho raised beef, Purdue raised Tyson raised chickens, where you put in 500 of them in a building, they're going to be diseased. You're going to have a problem. But a natural environment for these same animals does not breed disease.
So our code does not state you cannot have them. It's only a distance requirement. And your gardens are agricultural. It's just that they don't have a distance requirement. So gardens are, are fine.
Well, last week it said they weren't crops technically.
Yeah, I think if, I think if we go further into the legal, into the legal definition of crocs, crops, and we drive through that word, I think it has to do with something of the consumption of others or possibly even selling it, but I'm not one.
I'm zoned to sell all of the stuff.
Yeah, I'm not.
I can sell anything I want from my front porch. I just can't have four chickens in my backyard.
I think you're trying to draw a comparison based on definitions, but right now, the focus is just on chickens and agriculture, not crops, not garden, not your garden, not your tomato plants.
My problem is if I felt like I had 10 chickens and it was a lot of chickens and I was using them to sell them, I could see your point. But I specifically purchased the chickens to fit into my yard to not overeat or destroy it. Anymore would be too many. I actually only intended to have three, but I'm such a good surrogate chicken mother, I saved one from death. So I have all four still alive. I never intended to have four. I only meant to have three.
Right, but the number of chickens is not, is in question here.
That's my contention. You have left no, no definition of what would be considered personal use as opposed to an agricultural farm animal. What if I had ducks in my yard? They lay eggs. Is that a farm animal? Is it agricultural? What if I had a swan?
I would say they were ones that had to meet the distance.
I can bring you reference letters, I mean, signatures from all my neighbors and nobody has a problem with my chickens.
But again, I don't think the question is the complaint. There have been complaints, but that's not the issue here. The issue is what's written in code. But the issue is not, based on the number of complaints, the issue is just the existence.
Right, now the issue is the distance requirement because you consider them farm animals. See, I don't have a feeding pen. Chickens eat all around your yard. My chickens have an aviary that they go in at night for their own protection.
All right, so your pen is your yard?
No, my yard is fenced for all of my animals.
So that's be considered the pen?
That would be a legal stretch. I mean, you say my dog lives in a pen.
Well, it has to by code because you can't let it run free and within the town, so yes.
It's not called a pen, it's called a fenced yard. See, here's my contention. You want to limit some things, but not other things. And I just don't think it's right.
Well, I think at this point, the, the, the code is, the town code is the town code. It's enforced correctly by the zoning administrator. If you want to see a change, then I suggest you file for a change in the, in the zoning code. But I just don't see where we are, with the way our code is written, I just don't see where we have, we do it in the best interest to protect all town residents, no matter where they are or what their situation is. So it's a bigger picture than your specific circumstance. And I think we're, as long as you follow the zoning ordinance, I think you're fine.
All right. Like I said, I'm pursuing a lot of avenues.
Okay.
Um, commission members, before you move on, we did have a legal here, if you wanted to consult at all before Mr. John McGuire was here and is here, if you have any questions for him as to, before we move on to the next.
Mr. McGuire, what's your, do you have an opinion on this for us to advise us?
I don't think I could say it any more accurately or more clearly than you just did. The code, and I've, I've heard the complaint that there's no carve-out exception in the code for the benefit of this type of use. And, and I think Mrs. Martin is right. There is no carve-out. So the code is the code. It's been reasonably interpreted and I think it's been stated by all of you tonight and it would require some type of amendment to the code. But that's not within the authority of the zoning administrator to simply make a favorable interpretation that's not based in the code.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Does the town need, need, need any type of motion from us to deny the use at this point or?
No.
No, it's just a violation at this point.
Yeah, I think that's all it is.
Yep. All right.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, S170040, Sheets Final Review.
Good evening, commission. My name is Brent Brubaker. Engineer and permit manager with Sheets Incorporated. Well, I warmed my laptop back up. Last time that we met with you folks was to get a preliminary plan approval. We're here this evening. We've submitted our final plans to Town of Manchester staff. We worked diligently with Steve and Michelle and Rodney on addressing comments. We're here this evening to, to request final approval of our plan. And also here to, to offer any answers to any questions you might have. I don't believe we, I believe that at this particular point, we've addressed the comments from, from staff. And now I'm having trouble logging into my computer here.
Cat's lock on.
While he's doing that, I'll let you know that when we did meet, of course, the water and sewer issues were all worked out with our director of public works. And I had also questioned them on the retaining wall because the plans show a fencing that we had not approved. But he assured me that it is going to be the wrought iron that we had requested at five feet, I think.
Yeah, we, then that, that requirement for height was from the Board of Education. They had requested the height of the fencing and we are accommodating that as well, the height of the fence.
We also discussed the ability to make some sort of pedestrian walk into there, which they cannot do from Long Lane due to the, due to the hill there. So they looked on the north side, but on the north side, due to landscaping requirements, there's no room for sidewalks. So Sheets has agreed to pave the driveway from the Gary entrance back so that there will be something that you can walk into.
Right.
So those were a few items that are not shown on these current plans that we did discuss and change.
And we have, we have added your exact comments that you have made here to this plan that we have up here this evening. And we've accommodated those, those comments. Yeah, we've also provided, we did provide and we have it on our plans now, a detail of the fencing material. It's, it's a cast iron decorative style fencing that is installed on top of the retaining wall. It goes between our property and the Board of Education. And like I said, it's, it's five feet high. And then there's actually the county required screening that goes between that particular fencing and the Board of Education property as required by the county landscaping. You know, just one thing I want to throw out here is we, we actually really would like to thank the Town of Manchester staff. They, they really worked hard with this. I'm under a really tight schedule here. We, we're actually, start date is February 4th is when we want to get, we want to get started. This type of a project's a little different because it is an existing store, so there's a lot of logistics that I have to take care of. It's, we actually are going to be relocating some employees while, you know, the stores close, shut down, and we begin construction. So it is a little bit of a time crunch and I just wanted to thank staff for, for really working hard with us to get, get us to this particular point.
How long do you think it's going to take? So say you close the store fully on February 4th, just the ballpark, not trying to hold you anything?
Actually, the, the exact date is in, is in September, it's like mid-September.
Mid-September? Okay.
Yeah, we, we have, you know, to get started, there's, you know, there's some, you know, obviously planned recordings and some things like that. So there's a lot has to happen with the holiday season that even, even makes my job a little more difficult to get to that particular point. But we're really excited. I mean, I think, you know, the biggest thing that we're excited about is we're, we're going to be able to, to have a nice looking property here in the Town of Manchester to replace what's there now. So we're, we're really excited to make these improvements.
Can you explain to me just how the entrance and exit points are going to work on the south side of the store and the north side with the Gary property?
Yes. So the, the Gary property, we actually have a, an access easement, shared access easement agreement that, that we've agreed to with Gary. So if you can, as you can see here, I kind of zoomed in a little bit. This access provides for a right out, a left out, and a right in, left in access. So it's a full movement access driveway at this particular location. Then after you get off of, of, you, you can actually enter the Sheets property in this particular location. The Gary property is, once you, once you enter in on this particular shared easement access, the Gary property is kind of, kind of opened up a little bit into his, his parking area. As far as the south side is concerned, the south side is controlled by a traffic signal, all movements as well at that particular signal. There's, the traffic signal will remain as is. Right now, we've, we've increased the, the, a small little bit amount of increase width on the access here. So, you know, that's also a full movement access. So there is the ability for, for motorists from the Gary property to actually come through the Sheets property to the traffic signal if they so choose to use the signal to get out, to make a movement that might be, you know, difficult during a peak period of time. They can actually utilize the traffic signal. Also, Long Lane, as you know, that Long Lane is actually being extended through the site. So Long Lane would, would be, also be able to have access to the traffic signal as well, motorists that use that today. The change in configuration today, motorists come, once they enter our property, that you make an immediate left-hand turn down over the hill. Because of some grading requirements and grading issues we had in this particular area, you know, we've kind of, we've kind of relocated that access movement to get to the traffic signal. But it's still, it's still there, it's still available to be used.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are the two spaces on the west side of the building, numbers two and three, are those intended to also be ADA accessible spaces or is the striping a simplified walkway?
I believe, Martin, you can jump in. Just a walkway. Yeah, and our, our handicap spaces that we have on this site, looks like we have four.
South and east.
Correct. Correct. And, you know, we typically, the, the, the reason for the location of this, and State of Maryland does a really good job with this, they want, they want a lot of handicaps right at the doors, right at the doorway. So, and that's where we've positioned them. One of the reasons that we, we, we don't have them positioned on stalls two and three, because that would be a really good valid question, why don't you put them there? So one of the problems that we have with our gas pumps is, if you can see in the middle of the building here, this, this cash register area, we, our cashiers actually have to have a, an unobstructed view to the pumps while vehicles are pumping. So lots of times, if you see some of our stores, you'll, you'll see there's signs up there that says no SUVs or trucks. The reason for that is, is to try to keep that sightline wide open. So that's why we don't put the van accessible handicaps in that location.
And walk me through one more time the placement of the town's required decorative wrought iron fencing. Will that be immediately, immediately behind the retaining wall or closer to the property line?
It'll be actually in the wall itself.
Okay, it'll be set into the cap stem?
Correct. And, and that wall begins, whoops, that wall begins in this location. And actually, to give you an idea of how, what the height of this looks like, this is basically zero elevation and then it actually goes up in elevation to this back corner back here, which is about eight feet from this point down into the parking lot, surface of the Sheets store. And then it, it goes from eight feet to about a high point somewhere in this location of about 12 feet. So just a little bit higher than a basketball hoop, a couple of feet higher than a basketball hoop. So sounds, sounds high, but it's not as high as what you would think. And then obviously, it'll, it'll have the fencing on it as well at the top, so.
What was the snow removal plan again?
You know, snow removal, that's one thing that we actually do a five-star job because if we can't get the folks into the lot, you know, that's not good for us. So we usually contract that privately with, with a private snow plow company. Typically, our, our guys, when they arrive at a site during a snowstorm, they're typically there until it's done and they'll stay. If it's an ongoing snowstorm, we're constantly keeping, keeping the lot free and open. In fact, you know, lots of times, you know, up in the northern part of PA and stuff where we have a lot of snow, I mean, we're, we're kind of a refuse in a meeting place because we're usually the only place you can get into in a, in a blizzard because we keep it open. Yeah, well, you know, we've had, you know, we, we, it's a good question. You know, we would, we would pile those in the areas that we could around the lot, in some of our island areas that, at the corners. But, you know, for the real deep snow, we'd probably have to haul it out. If we got one of those gigantic snowstorms that dumped many feet, you know, we may have to haul it out at that point.
And they have to go all the way up to Long Lane?
Yeah, it's a give and take between the town and Sheetz's employees, because in this case scenario, or in the existing scenario, when our guys go down Long Lane, they actually go into the parking lot and move it out, you know? I mean, it's, they know, and as Brett brought up, you know, if anything's going to stay open, Sheetz is going to stay open. So it helps our folks out as much as it helps them out, so it's give and take. I can foresee our guys going down Long Lane, making the turn, you know, dropping the snow, you know, back into the parking lot, and, yeah, that's, in fact, that's, that's better than what we have right now. That's a good workable, workable plan there for snow removal, so, yeah.
Sorry if you said this while I was taking some notes. What is the height of the fence on top of the retaining wall?
Five feet.
Okay. Because there's going to be a lot of kids playing in that, behind that fence on that field. Kids are curious.
Correct, correct.
Twelve feet. Steve, pop your head, how, how high is this ceiling?
I believe this, I don't know. I'm not going to say off the top.
Thirteen, twelve, thirteen? Just curious.
Maybe, maybe, maybe 12. I don't have nothing to go by. 12?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Those are all gasoline pumps, right?
Uh, we, we actually have auto diesel as well, not, not the high-flow diesel, because we are, we're not looking to have a tractor and trailer customer here. We just want the folks that have a regular pickup truck diesel.
Do away with your kerosene pump?
We are, unfortunately. You know, Michelle had asked me a few meetings ago to check into that, and I did. And, and we've actually, we do not, we just got completely out of the kerosene business, company-wide. Even, even in our real rural places, we have in PA, we, we just don't have the kerosene anymore.
Did you look at this spot for electric?
Did I look?
Did you look at this location for electric hook-up, or no?
Um, so how, we actually have, we have a couple contracts with electric providers. We have, we have a contract with Tesla, and we have some contracts with another company called Electrify America. So the way that's been working lately is that they're, they're actually coming to us with locations they would like to install it, the electric charging stations at. We completely are 100% on board with them, and we, we agree to put them in, or to allow them to put them in on our, on our property. So it's one of these, one of these things where if we get contacted for this particular location, we would, you know, we would, we would say absolutely yes. And, and the way we handle that is we, like with Tesla, we say, you guys go get all the permitting and approvals from the town, and, you know, you know, then we'll talk to them privately about how they can isolate the area to actually do the physical improvements. But we, we let the permitting and approval process up to them, and they, they would come back in to you folks to see what approvals or zoning would be necessary. But we would, we're absolutely interested in accommodating electric at all.
Do you all think there's anything currently from handover that?
Yeah, you know, right now, I think what, what we're seeing is we're seeing Tesla and Electrify America concentrating a lot of stores that are directly off of interstates. I've had two stores, I've been here with a little over three years. I've had two stores, one in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, that, and one in State College, Pennsylvania, and right off, literally right off the interchange. And I think, you know, Tesla makes a pretty significant investment. They're spending about $500,000 to put in the transformers and the charging stations that are necessary on their property. So it's a pretty big investment for them. So they're, they're kind of cherry picking the best spots right now first, and they'll probably do some more infill.
I know there's one in Frostburg as well.
Yeah.
Okay. It seems like you've received approvals from all other agencies. Couple minor cleanup comments I believe still exist out there that are drafting comments, so to speak, not technical comments.
We do. We have, we have, uh, one comment from, I think it's still the development review. There was a question concerning some landscaping. We just actually received the Board of Educate, we have actually have a temporary construction easement with them that was just signed. We actually received that this morning, so we will be able to distribute that to the county to show that. I believe we have, we're down to one minor comment that our CLSI has already addressed and gotten back into. Martin Covington on a stormwater question about just some additional volume in one of our water treatment systems. That's been taken care of, and Martin's reviewing that right now. And, and then we have a couple cleanup comments on our driveway permit with SHA. And, and after we receive those, then yeah, then we'll diligently go into the recording stage. We've actually already started working on a draft version of the public works agreement with the Town of Manchester. Attorney Bauer Sox has started, started that process. And we'll be getting in, you know, estimates to staff for their review for the, the bonding amount for, for the sewer facilities and, and the warranty information, that kind of stuff. So we're, we're putting those documents together, and, and what we're hoping is to have a nice seamless process here, and, you know, hopefully be ready here in February 4th to break ground.
Okay. Directory Construction will have an impeding of traffic?
We, we will not. The, what we will actually do is we'll actually install a construction fence, and we'll completely isolate the area for safety concerns, because you mentioned about the schoolchildren and things like that. And so, you know, during the, the summer months and the early spring, when construction, there'll be, there'll be a chain link. I think it's, I think we put six-foot-high construction fence around the site perimeter, completely keep it closed, just for those kind of reasons. So we, we don't have a lot of work out on the, out on Main Street, so, you know, there's our, our new driveway or our expanded driveway connection between the Gary property and our property. And then we're doing some, some minor improvements in paving at the intersection location. We do have a couple, we do have to go out into Main Street to cap some existing water lines. Rodney identified some water lines that we need to go out to the main and cap. So when we do that particular work, you know, we'll, we'll go to probably a partial one-lane closure, traffic control plan, and so there'll probably be flaggers to flag traffic around that. So there, it will impede at times, but, you know, hopefully that'll be very short instances and we get the heck back out of the roadway.
Is your, your construction plan going to require seven days a week work? Or are you going to stick to the normal five-day business week, or is it yet to be determined?
That's yet to be determined. We typically only work five days. I don't anticipate, you know, there, there may be initially, because one of the very first things that will be done on this particular project is the relocation of some of the public facilities. And we may initially, you know, work a little bit, maybe, maybe work a little bit longer to get that work done, get that done, get that inspected by the town, so that that's out of our way, and we don't need to worry about that, and we can go in and actually start putting footings in for buildings. So possibly early in, in, in the, in the part here, we, we might be working a few longer days and Saturdays possibly.
Here.
Okay. There's no other questions or comments. I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that the plan be approved as submitted, subject to all outstanding comments being approved satisfactory to town staff.
Okay. Motion on the floor, seconded. Michelle, do you have the motion?
Hey, that was one of my shorter ones.
Yeah.
Got it? Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of the Sheetz store. Open for public comment.
Under the Gary shegel.
We're good.
Well, that's good.
I can apologize, and if I could take us back to the agricultural use, just, just for a moment. I was taking some notes, and it got, got slipped by me. Ms. Martin had received a letter expressing the violation, and she was, she had asked for an extension. We gave her 60 days. She came to the council meeting last week, and we extended that again. I don't recall if we extended her 30 days or 60 days.
60 days, yes. I believe it was Council, Councilperson Pacelli made the motion.
Okay.
That is correct.
So she has been granted an extension of 60 days, beginning on, I don't remember the exact date, but?
Beginning last Tuesday, when the motion was made, right?
So the 11th, the 60 days from the 11th? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Michelle, we are slated for January 22nd.
January, I thought it was the 15th.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, it's a Tuesday. I'm looking at a Monday. You're correct. January 15th is, will you have business for the commission?
At this point, I'm, I'm, I don't have anything in the works.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't heard from Riley's Garden. That could be our possibility.
All right. I will, I will be out of town, so.
Okay.
Larry will chair the meeting if we meet on January 15th, 2019.
Okay.
I did have one quick comment to bring up there. Michelle, I was approached by two different members of the community about the liquor store building. And I don't know if we're going to go back to meeting notes and, and what we approved, but I don't know if anybody remembers approving the porch look. Remember the, the long discussion we had about the porch look? And I have noticed that he's only put a small porch over the front, the one window, where we were trying to get the community look at the front porch. So there might be emails coming out for us to look into that over the holiday period, because he's right out of critical pain in the construction phase where he would need to put those awnings up right now. And I know he put the porch, the one porch is built on the small building to make it look like it, and then.
I did, I did go back into the records and pull it out. So it is supposed to have a little awning over the double doors in the front and an awning along the side.
Yeah, the porch look.
And same.
An awning or an actual porch?
It's a, not an awning, it's a roof.
Ri, okay, yeah, porch, okay.
A porch extension.
A pop-out roof with, and it doesn't have cables back. I don't know if that's something the town would make a phone call on, or do we need?
They are free-hanging awnings without a post going to the ground. Appears to be projecting, what, five to six feet. And from the Main Street side, there's two, one that's over the double-door entry, and one that's along the entire portion of the facade that is towards the south side.
Okay. Maybe they're waiting to build this, maybe that wraps around together, but I don't know if it's something you need to make a phone call on and ask, or?
I can certainly do that.
This is the approved architecture that came with the approved application, so.
All right, very good.
And then you've got the exact same scenario on the backside.
Good. Thanks, sir. All right, any other business for the good of the commission? Well, I hope everyone has a happy and healthy holiday and New Year, and please be safe in your travels. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Good night.